The St. Paul City Council will come to order, roll call.
Naker, Prince, Tao, Tolbert, Busuri, Jalali Nelson, Council President Brenmoan, seven present, no one absent.
Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
At Pledge of Allegiance, Supersubordinate of the United States of America, and to their quality, towards which stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice at heart.
Before we start our meeting today, I just wanted to acknowledge the sudden passing of Rich Kramer, a resident of St. Paul, who is a Met Council member, a Planning Commission member, a Charter Commission member, and a huge part of the civic engagement fabric of the East Side, a large part of which I represent, and I would just like to have a moment of silence on his behalf. He will be missed.
Consent agenda items one through 12 are before you for your consideration.
We will be pulling, we'll be pulling item number 10, and I'm trying to get some information from our attorney here. Are we pulling seven for separate consideration, or shall it stay on consent?
The case in favor is null and in question.
Okay. All right. So we'll be pulling item number 10 for separate consideration. Is there anything else that should be considered separately? All right. So seeing none, Mr. Tolbert moves the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The consent agenda is adopted as amended. Item number 10, Resolution 19-1606, approving the application with conditions per the Deputy Legislative Hearing Officer for Arcade Auto Body LLC doing business as Arcade Auto Body for an auto body repair painting shop license at 1346 Arcade Street.
Mr. Busuri.
Yes. So the new owner's business plan that was submitted as part of the licensing process, he wrote that he wanted to be allowed to allow the renters to operate their auto repair business until 8:30. This caused some concerns with the surrounding neighbors. They called our office, emailed, and I was able to talk to the business owner, and he voluntarily agreed to cut back two hours in the operation. So he will be closing at 6:30. So we added amendment to the resolution, and that is item number 14 in the license, I think. So, and that reads, the hours of operation on Monday through Thursday shall be limited to between 8:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m.
Okay. So that is version two in Legisstar?
Yep.
All right. So is there any discussion on that motion? All right. So Mr. Busuri moves version two in Legisstar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted as amended. Item number 13, Resolution Public Hearing 19-207, ratifying the assessment for the 2018 Street Maintenance Service Program Mill and Overlay, Western Avenue from Larch to Front. Public hearing was held on August 21st.
All right. This is for us for final vote. Is there further discussion on item number 13? All right. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Ms. Naker. Tao, Mr. Tao.
Six in favor, one opposed, being Councilmember Prince. The resolution is adopted. Item number 14, Resolution Public Hearing 19-206, ratifying the assessment for the 2018 Street Maintenance Service Program Mill and Overlay, Franklin Avenue from Trunk Highway 280 to Pellham. Public hearing is held on August 21st.
Any further discussion on this item?
I move to approve.
Ms. Nelson moves to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion prevails.
Six in favor, one opposed, being Councilmember Prince. The resolution is adopted. Item number 15, Resolution Public Hearing 19-208, ratifying the assessment for the 2018 Street Maintenance Service Program Mill and Overlay, Prior Avenue from University to Minnehaha. Public hearing was held on August 21st.
Any final discussion on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Nelson moves approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Six in favor, one opposed, being Councilmember Prince. The resolution is adopted. Item number 16, Resolution Public Hearing 19-209, ratifying the assessment for the 2018 Street Maintenance Service Program Mill and Overlay, Third Street from Ruth Dippin Night. Public hearing was held on August 21st.
And any final discussion on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Nelson moves approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Six in favor, one opposed, being Councilmember Prince. The resolution is adopted.
The St. Paul City Council will recess.
The Library Board meeting is called to order. Roll call. Brenmoan, Busuri, Jalali Nelson, Naker, Tao, Tolbert, Chair Prince, seven present, no one absent. Resolution 19-1585, requesting that the city levy property taxes for the library agency.
Is there any discussion of this item? I will say that the budget before us does not take into consideration the 42,000 cardholders who returned to the library after we made the momentous decision last year, and a good decision, to eliminate fines and fees. Nonetheless, I want to assure the St. Paul friends and St. Paul library users that the Library Board will work throughout this fall to bring the library materials budget up to an appropriate standard. With a motion from Mr. Tolbert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is adopted.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted.
Ms. Naker moves to adjourn.
The St. Paul City Council is back in order. Roll call.
Naker, Prince, Tao, Tolbert, Busuri, Jalali Nelson, Council President Brenmoan, seven present, no one absent. Item number 17, Resolution 19-1587, approving a 2020 maximum property tax levy for the Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
Mr. Tolbert?
We discussed this at the two o'clock meeting, and we had unanimous approval by the HRA, and I would move approval.
Any further discussion on the HRA levy, or maximum property tax levy? Seeing none, the motion's been made. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted. Item number 18, Resolution 19-1572, approving a 2020 maximum property tax levy for the city of St. Paul.
And we're going to get a staff report on this one, and I do want to acknowledge that we have some fresh faces, people I haven't seen in the chambers before, and today we're having kind of a strange meeting. So I just wanted to share, so you folks understand what we're doing. Today is the day that, under the Minnesota statutes, we're required to set the levy limit, the top amount that our city can levy for our library, for our general fund, and for our Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And so we still have three months to go through the budget, but we can't go any higher than the limit that we set today. And because we are all in different commissions, wearing different hats, but the same people, we have to adjourn and call the meeting back to order. So it's a little funny as we're trading roles, and sometimes it's a little clunky as well, but that's what we're doing. And so it's an important day that you're here, and we're glad to see you. But I just, in case you were wondering why Ms. Prince was banging on the table with her nameplate, that's what's going on every day. So we're, thanks for the interruption, but I was noticing people coming in that I don't normally see in the chambers, and it's wonderful to have you here, and I wanted to bring you along. So, Ms. Earl.
Thank you. Council President Brenmoan, council members, the resolution you have in front of you is the final of the max levy resolutions that you'll be considering today as City Council. This resolution approves the max levy for the city, and that includes the debt, library, city, and port authority portions. The total resolution includes the mayor's proposed amount of 163.6 million for the levy, which is the 4.85% increase over 2019. Additionally, the resolution adds an amount to fund organized collection should the ordinance be repealed in November. That adds another $27.1 million to the levy, and an additional 17.38% over 2019. So we get to a total of 22.23% of an increase, and about $34.7 million total, of an increase over 2019 levy. So the total levy, including all of those elements I just mentioned, and the library that you just approved as the Library Board requesting to levy on the city's, on the library's behalf, is $190,745,461. And this is, as you know, a maximum, so it can be reduced, as you just mentioned, over the next few months, to the final levy that you adopt in December.
And let me just ask you a question, again, partially for people in the chambers, and partially just for clarity's sake. A lot of times, when we're talking about our levy increase, people translate that to mean, my taxes are going to go up 23.23%. Can you explain the difference? I know this is a tough one, but the difference between what we're doing here with the levy versus what is it, what would be a tax increase or a factor in a tax increase?
Sure. Council President Brenmoan, this is the total that the city is going to collect in order to fund the city library debt, and then on behalf of the Port Authority. So this increase doesn't translate to what an individual property owner will see. That's going to be dependent on what's happening with their property and the changes in property value for other properties in the city. So this is a levy that's spread over the pie of tax base in St. Paul. What happens to your individual property will depend on factors that are really specific to your home or your business. And so it's, I'd be very surprised to find someone who actually sees this percentage, just because there's so many other factors that go into your final levy amount.
The largest one being the value?
Yes, the value of your home, which we see, we see the median home, you know, that's a good example of the median value changes, and that drives a lot of the, you know, when you look at the median property, that drives a lot of the changes in the property tax that that particular property will see, in addition to increases in levies that you and other jurisdictions will approve over the next couple of months.
Right. And the city is about a third of the property tax bill. Okay, a little less. Okay. Are there any questions from Ms. Earl? Okay. Thank you very much for that staff report. Any comments from council members? Ms. Prince?
I will be voting against the levy today. For the past six weeks, I have been meeting with my constituents at their doors as I run for reelection. I hear a consistent theme. The city needs to get back to basics, public safety, parks, libraries, and street maintenance, and stop continually raising property taxes as if we elected officials had a blank check. The mayor's budget with the underlying levy increase of 4.85% cuts public safety, the library materials budget, imposes a fee for after-school care for kids, and includes a $750,000 program that will not even be operational in 2020. In fact, this three-quarter of a million dollar program is in partnership with Minneapolis, and Minneapolis, with a $1.6 billion budget, has not put one dime into this program in its 2020 budget. In conversations with the mayor, we reached an impasse related to my concerns with his proposed budget. The second part of the levy increase is 17.4%, which we will levy on advice of council in anticipation of taking over payment of the trash contract if the voters vote no on November 5th. When I talk to my constituents at the door, they say, "Is that a threat? You're telling us if we vote against garbage, you'll raise our taxes 17%?" No, it's not a threat. But it is also not the only option we have open to us related to the trash referendum. The contract includes a force majeure clause that nullifies the contract in the event of an act of God, a legislative or judicial action. This option, raised by judges hearing this case, remains unexplored. Two years ago, this council was compelled to vote for another huge increase of 23.9% maximum levy, resulting from another lawsuit pertaining to right-of-way assessments. This lawsuit could have been settled at the outset, before we went to court, for $11,000. But the then-city attorney chose instead to fight all the way to the Supreme Court, where, as in this case, we also lost. In November 2017, I voted no on the trash contract. Based on the concerns of my constituents that it was too expensive, it didn't create an incentive for waste reduction, and it was clear that waste management was poised to buy out the small local haulers that we entered into a consortium with to keep in business. The contract, as we have seen, was rife with unintended consequences. And repeated efforts to enter into good-faith negotiations with the haulers continue to go nowhere. I am not going to follow up one mistake after another, after another, by presuming that a bad trash contract needs to be assessed to all of the city's property taxpayers. So I will be voting no.
So, Ms. Prince, just to refocus a bit, we're voting on the levy limit today, not the budget.
Right.
And so I'm curious, given that you are opposed to the limit that's been presented, do you, would you like it to be higher or lower? Or do you have a different proposal?
Well, I, actually, no, I don't have a different proposal.
Okay.
I have problems with the underlying 4.85% and my inability to get anywhere with the mayor on it. And I am presuming that anything I propose now is not going to be accepted by my colleagues. If there's an interest in how we're discussing a lower levy limit, then I'm happy to entertain that idea.
Yeah, and I'm just asking for clarity's sake. You are protesting the trash portion of this, the four, and then also the 4.8%?
Yeah.
Because you would like it to be lower?
No, I would like it to include different things.
Okay. Ms. Naker?
Thank you. I appreciate Councilmember Prince's sentiments, and I also would say that I am open to discussing alternative proposals, if there are proposals today. And this is a very hard vote to take. One of my top priorities when we started this budget process was to keep our levy low. I've been hearing near universally from my constituents that they need a break after many years of tax increases. I'm sure all of us have been hearing very similar things from our constituents. I doubt anybody is clamoring for a double-digit levy increase. So to vote for a 22.23% increase is really painful. And my strongly-held hope is that we can bring this down dramatically by the time we actually set the levy in December, which is not what we're doing today. But given the uncertainty with regard to our organized collection ordinance, I believe this increase is the responsible thing to do to protect the city and to make sure that we can meet our obligations to our residents, no matter what happens. And I know, as I'm sitting here saying this, that this will not be the popular thing to do, this will not be a popular vote to take, but I'm not here to do what's popular, I'm here to do what's right and what's responsible, and that's what this vote is.
Mr. Busuri?
I will also not be supporting this or any budget increase this year, and here's why. While this is my first city budget as a council member, I have planned many budgets in the past, personal, organizational budgets, and for my business as well. Certain budgeting principles are universal, such as not spending more than you have, separating wants from needs, and prioritizing immediate needs from needs that may be postponed. Last December, my colleagues here at this table congratulated themselves on all their hard work of cutting the mayor's 2019 proposed budget levy down from 11.5 to just 10.46. To put this in the perspective of the seniors that I represent in Ward 6, cost of living adjustment from Social Security was 2.8%. Let that sink in for a moment. At, in the same timeframe, we added additional expenses to personal budgets of those same seniors and others through organized trash system. People who shared trash with neighbors worked hard to reduce waste to their near zero, or made other arrangements were forced to take on the city mandated system, often at very elevated rates. Then this council, with exception of my esteemed predecessor Dan Bostrom, accepted some bad advice from the city attorney's office and ignored the petition of more than 6,500 registers, voters, who wanted to place this issue on the ballot and have their voice heard. This resulted in a lawsuit for which we fought our citizens all the way to the state Supreme Court, costing additional money. Now the mayor and many on this council have threatened that if the people vote no on organized trash, we will punish them by raising their tax more than additional 17%. That would be tacked on the 4.85% that we, that is already proposed. I know that pointing this out will not earn me any friends at this table or next door at the mayor's office, but frankly, that's not my concern. My job as council member for Ward 6 is to do what is the best interest of those that I represent in my ward and the East Side. Thank you.
And so just again to clarify, we're setting the levy limit, not the budget. So I just, you said you wanted no, zero budget, zero levy increase?
Yes.
No, so you wanted zero. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Nelson?
Well, I would say, you know, I was sworn in on September 5th, 2018, and it's just over a year later. I remember at the time that we were rolling out our trash contract. It went into effect on October 1, 2018. So we're still less than a year out from it being implemented, and I am in my second budget in a year. And I do, I do feel that the vote and the parameters of it today reflect a sort of unprecedented situation that we're in. I didn't know in a year from now that we would be here. I didn't have the chance to shape this trash contract or even vote on it, but I've made it my duty to understand the conditions that led us here. I just, I guess what I think is important to lift up is, I would object to characterizing, setting this max levy to account for the contingency that could arise as a threat. I believe this council is working to operate with the legal guidance that we have, including from the highest court in the state, that hasn't issued further information about the outcome of this pending referendum that happens later this year. So as we head into this year of unknowns, I think it's worth saying, I take very seriously both the potential unfolding unknowns that we don't know, and also our obligation to be ready in case the very unexpected turn of events happens. So I view this as making the choice that we can make to give the parameters we need under the current information that we have. I am going to support voting for the additional piece of the levy, that's just the 4.85%. There's a lot of priorities within this council that we are grappling with in a very tough budget year. There's a lot of things that we would like to add, things that we need time to figure out how to pay for if we want to add them, things that are being taken away that we want to challenge, and this is giving us the parameters to talk about that. So this is the next step in this ongoing process. I'll be voting in support today and working to bring these costs down as much as possible as we figure out our budget for the coming year.
Mr. Tao?
Thank you, Council President. So my thought on this is that I'm not entirely happy or satisfied with this budget that was proposed initially. I think that gun violence, public safety, it's a big concern in the city, and we continue to struggle with that. I wish we would have more resource and opportunity to dismantle the root cause of gun violence to increase public safety. I don't see enough of that in this budget. I do see that the administration's putting $5.2 million into AMU Row and without community process. I disagree with that. There's a lot of things that's good about this budget, but there's a lot of things that I have question about, such as charging kids to go to rec check, and we brought that up earlier this morning in our budget session. But I think those who are paying attention, and I would make, you know, clarify a little bit here, that the position we're taking today to set the max levy is, given as it is today, is probably the best strategy, or for us to set it at 22, or set it the way that we have today, just in case the referendum doesn't pass. And it's not a different, this is not an easy decision, and not an easy vote, because every year when we set the levy, my ward, Ward 1, the North End, Frog Town, we get hit with the highest tax hike, and it's, and I live in Frog Town, and I know how challenging it is for my neighbors, especially those who are on fixed income, renters. And so, but I think that today's vote to set the max levy the way it is, is the most responsible thing that I think I can do at this moment. And I hope that if, in a, in the world that it should be, I would love to have enough funding so that we can have, we can have a strategic gun violence strategy, anti-gun violence strategy, public safety strategy, invest in ShotSpotter and all those different things that I really care about, really want. But, but we shouldn't take away what we need to do and the responsibility of council member for this city, and so I will be voting in support of the max levy as it is presented today.
Thank you. Mr. Tolbert?
Yeah. I'm going to be supporting the max levy today. As, as my colleagues and as Ms. Earl all stated very clearly, we're kind of in a unique position because based on state law, we have to set this max levy while there's still a lot of unknowns. One of the unknowns is, you know, what the final budget will look like. You know, I know there are things that we all would like to see in there. I would suggest that anybody who doesn't want to support any levy limit would bring proposals forward on where to cut as well, because that's what's going to have to happen if, if, if you don't want to support any levy limit at all. But in terms of this actual budget, we have a lot of unknowns. One, we have unknown how the final budget's going to look. You know, we have a lot of work to do, we're still We're still in our our council policy stage, and we're all pushing for different things, whether it's the question on police officers or funding for the police department, funding in parks, new fees like rec check or things like that. I think there's a lot for us to work out, and I look forward to working with you guys over the next couple of months on that. And the other big thing, obviously, the biggest unknown is, you know, really the placeholder or contingency for the trash referendum. One, we don't know what the results of the referendum are going to be. We will not know that until probably late on November 5 or November 6, whenever Ramsey County elections finishes that. And two, as Ms. Prince pointed out, we do not have a Supreme Court opinion yet, and we do not know what the answer on force majeure is going to be. We don't know what the answer on force majeure and damages would potentially be and what the different options the Supreme Court could bring forward on. That's a lot of what-ifs, and I think it would be, you know, reckless of us not to have a contingency plan and to be prepared for those what-ifs. Those are some very, very big what-ifs, and I think that's why, obviously, nobody wants to have our final levy be this, and I don't want it. I'd like it lower than 4.85. But we also have a responsibility when we're governing to keep that contingency plan and keep that responsible thing open, because there are so many what-ifs that we will find out over the next couple of months. And then we can have a real discussion here on what the final levy should be and what that final budget should look like once we have more facts that have not been answered yet there. So I'm going to be supporting this, you know, as as part of having that contingency plan there, and I look forward to working with you guys on the actual budget when some of this, when we have answers to some of those results from the Supreme Court and from other voters.
Great. And it so it sounds like there's the support is in the room, so I'm not going to belabor the point. I agree with many of the points my colleagues made. I think the the most unanimous of all is just that this is an unenviable position to be in. Nobody wants to set a levy at 22.23, especially so early in the process. But because we're required to put limit, did you have something, Mr. Taugh?
You can finish.
Go ahead.
I mean, to Councilmember Tolbert's point, the I think the key word here is contingency plan. And it's just like, you know, if we're in a football team, we have a starter, a quarterback, but we got to have a backup in case something happened. And so and in a sense, this is exactly what it is.
So yes, so I mean, because the requirement actually to have this vote this early is so that the county can prepare an estimated tax statement, and this is in the name of transparency, and so this is driven by this requirement. But it is unfortunate because there are so many unknowns. I think that's a good way to put it. There's a lot of unknowns, particularly the budget we've heard from four of the depart city or the major city departments. And I'm going to just name that the council has prioritized several areas where it believes that we need more information and input in debate. So I think that we asked the mayor for a low levy limit. That was our unanimous council priority, and we got back a levy of 4.85, which is which is low. And it's a budget that's been pretty painful for us because a lot of our priorities and things that we value have been squeezed or are eliminated. And so we have identified a focus on public safety investments, such as staffing, the police academy, community youth ambassadors, violence intervention programs, such as the Cure Violence Program, mental health and community wellness initiatives, other community for public safety ideas like the People's Cabinet, alternatives to policing that reduce crime, improve technology and data outputs like ShotSpotter. We're also looking for resources to enforce the $15 minimum wage, which is something we said we would do, preserving downtown business district investments, as well as seeking dollars to fund library materials and looking at rec center fees. So there's a lot still in front of us that we need to to work through. And then also, I didn't think correct, that contingency is a great word. I've been calling it a placeholder because we also don't know what is before us with the Supreme Court decision. It is responsible. It protects our city's services. It protects our bond rating. And by the time we actually pass the levy in December, these unknowns will be known. And this council has proven that it can and will bring the levy down. And so that is my commitment as well. So we will have a roll call vote on this. Mr. Tolbert moves the max levy. This is setting the max levy. Mr. Copeland, roll call.
Naker?
Yes.
Prince?
No.
Tao?
Yes.
Tolbert?
Yes.
Busuri?
No.
Janelle Nelson?
Yes.
Council President Brenn Moyn.
Yes.
Five in favor, two opposed, those being Councilmembers Prince and Busuri. The resolution is adopted. Item number 19, second reading of ordinance 19-60, amending Chapter 66 of the Legislative Code pertaining to overnight shelters. This ordinance is laid over to October 2 for third reading public hearing. Item number 20, resolution public hearing 19-331, amending the financing and spending plans in the Office of Financial Services in the amount of $903 for the gift of travel expenses from the Heartland Alliance and Mott Foundation for city staff members Marie Cartier-Romos and Ikram Kaliso to attend the Upper Midwest College Savings Account Consortium convening.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 21, resolution public hearing 19-317, authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to accept funds in the amount of $115,000 from the Capital Region Watershed District, authorizing the proper city officials to execute in agreement with the CRWD and amending the financing and spending plan for the Midway Peace Park project.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Taugh moves to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Taugh, any comments on this before we approve?
No, Council President, thank you.
Okay. And approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 22, resolution public hearing 19-319, amending the financing and spending plan in the Department of Parks and Recreation in the amount of $250,000 for funds granted from the DNR's Outdoor Recreation Grant Program for the Lower Landing Park Project.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 23, resolution public hearing 19-327, approving the application of Minneapolis-St. Paul Magazine for sound level variance for amplified and live music during the Smokeout event on September 28 at Kicken Case Market, 928 Seventh Street West.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 24, resolution public hearing 19-329, approving the application of Tom Schroeder-Waldman for a sound level variance for amplified music during the Waldman Oktoberfest on September 27 to the 29 at 445 Smith Avenue North.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 25, resolution public hearing 19-326, approving the application of Minnesota United FC and Allianz Field for sound level variance for amplified music during the Minnesota United FC versus Sportsing KC MLS game on September 25 at 400 Snelling Avenue North.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Taugh moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 26, resolution public hearing 19-328, approving the application of Immune Deficiency Foundation for sound level variance for outdoor music and announcements during the IDF Walk for Immunity Deficiency on October 5 at Como Park.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Nelson moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 27, resolution public hearing 19-323, approving the application of Anderson Race Management for a sound level variance for outdoor music and announcements during the Running Home for Jacob event on September 29 at Phelan Park.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Busuri moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Legislative hearing consent agenda items 28 through 89 are before you for your consideration.
Good afternoon, Ms. Mormon.
Good afternoon, Council President Brenn Moyn, council members. I am aware of just one person here to testify, and that is for item number 40.
Item number 40, RLHTA 19-607, appealing or ratifying the appealed special tax assessment for property at 612 Cook Avenue East.
Ms. Mormon.
Council President, this is an appeal of a garbage hauling bill for the first quarter of 2019. The amount proposed in the assessment is $44.78. What we're looking at is an amount that's a little bit unusual compared to what the garbage rates are, and it reflects an adjustment that the hauler made. Indeed, Mr. Copeland was originally charged for too large of a container, and so they decreased the proposed assessment downward to be $44.78. The content of Mr. Copeland's comments weren't related to the amount of the assessment itself, but rather relating to process on garbage hauling issues in general.
Great. Are there any questions for Ms. Mormon? No, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Welcome. You don't need to adjust the microphones. Just stand just stand right between them. You're a pro.
And I thought today I'd start with a little humor. You know, I read in the I read in the paper about Choo Choo Bob being Choo Choo Bob Day. So happy Choo Choo Bob Day. It's a pretty sad day, though, for our city, in spite of Choo Choo Bob. You know, to turn this council into a collection agency for waste management is really, really quite a fall. And, you know, you mentioned at the top, Madam President, and I learned it just when you announced it, the death of Richard Kramer. He and I had the distinction of both serving as chairs of our charter commission. And, you know, we can do better than this as a city. We can do a lot better than this, and I hope that we will. And, you know, the fact that we can't have any input before you adopt a proposed levy and yet we can talk about, you know, my garbage bill.
Mr. Copeland.
You know, it's quite a parallel in the universe.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Just to make a slight correction, the council actually held a public forum in advance of the levy limit this year as a very, it's the first time we've done it. So to say that we didn't take public input is not true. Nevertheless, my friend, we're here to discuss item number 40, and I'd like you to stick with the agenda item.
Right. And I and at the risk of angering any members on the council, I'll congratulate Ms. Mormon and her staff because they did see that that adjustment was made to my bill. So you're doing a good job on on that department. And I got a new bill from my friends at Waste Management, which is a repeat of the last bill. So, you know, we got some communication issues there. And, you know, all I can say is, I hope by the time we get to December that we've made a big change and we don't have to talk about garbage every week at this meeting hall that should be for the people and making life better in St. Paul and safer for our residents. And frankly, you know, to spend $647 a year on getting rid of the stuff we don't want, that's no bargain. And frankly, assessing every taxpayer in the city, the cost of collection is no way to reduce the bill. So, you know, you're making the situation much worse with what you're doing. And but I do recommend if people have a problem with their bill, they should go see Ms. Mormon. She does a good job over there with getting some changes, because it's hard to get through to Waste Management. Thank you, your president.
Mr. Busuri moves to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails. Mr. Busuri.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland, for coming and sharing your opinions, and I move the recommendation of the hearing officer.
That's been a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The the resolution is adopted.
Okay, and that's the only?
Council President Brenn Moyn, I'm not aware of anyone else here to testify, although there might be somebody in the room.
All right. So are you, do you have a legislative hearing item between 28 and 89?
I'm one of those going to the garbage bill.
Can we get your address?
Sure. 2140 Baird.
2140 Baird?
I did not conduct a legislative hearing on this item. What I would need to do is to go into the computer system, find the assessment, and then I can tell you which agenda item that 2140 Baird might relate to.
All right.
Right now, I couldn't tell you which item it is.
All right. I'm not seeing it. I see a Baird, but not.
It is not on your agenda as an individual item. I believe it would appear, if it is on one of these assessments roles, between items 82 and 89. So I can take a look at that for you.
Okay. All right. Ms. Mormon is just going to cross-check which item. So and sorry for the formality, but just that keeps your testimony attached to the proper place in the public record. Okay. So this will likely be the last item on our agenda, so if we want, I don't know how long this is going to take, Ms. Mormon. Like, is this a, okay, this is a one-minute thing. Because if it's 10, we could always go to news from the wards. It's a good time to find your news from the wards.
Council President Brenn Moyn, the assessment for this address for delinquent bills for the first quarter of 2019 was already levied on September 11 of 2019. So the council did address this matter. There is another pending assessment coming forward, but that won't be in front of you for public hearing until November 13, I believe.
Okay, so the first item has been has already been levied, and there's a pending item that will come before us on November 13.
Yes.
All right, I'm just working on this guy here. So so sir, it sounds like your your public hearing on this will be in November. Okay? Sorry about that. Okay, so we will look now at the balance of the legislative hearing consent agenda. If you have an item between number 28 and 89 that has not been heard, this is your public hearing. All right. Seeing none, Ms. Nelson moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the consent agenda is adopted as amended.
And before we adjourn, if folks have news from their wards, this is the time. Mr. Busuri.
I just want to invite everyone that's here and watching at home to the Harvest Festival Parade. It's this Saturday. I think it's the last parade of the year in our ward, so please come and join. Thank you. It starts at 12 o'clock.
Right on. I'll be there. Ms. Naker.
Thank you. The new and eagerly anticipated phase of Higher Ground that Catholic Charities is opening is having a sneak preview today as we speak. I think remarks are in 11 minutes, so everybody still has time to rush over there. This is going to be the place for additional housing and also for services around the clock. So really, an exciting amenity for downtown.
Great. And that's something I know there's people on around this table that I've been working on for a long time.
Oh, I thought you meant ready to go.
No. So I think it's really worth highlighting and a great addition. Ms. Nelson. Ms. Nelson?
Great, well, there's something exciting happening Friday, September 27th, from 3 to 6. St. Paul Parks and the Minnesota United Team and U.S. Soccer Foundation and Target are celebrating new footsall courts opening at Hamlin Park, and this has been a long time in the making. There'll be giveaways, snacks, soccer activities, fun for the whole family, and get to check out the new courts. So, Hamlin Park is just off Snelling if you want to come to the midway and see an awesome new asset in the community.
Great. Ms. Prince?
Yes. Friday, September 27th, this Friday, starting around 6:30 PM, come down to Swede Hollow at the site of the Swede Hollow hinge stones, which is where Art in the Hollow takes place, if you're familiar with that, just north of the Drury Tunnel. And come and enjoy delightful stories about Swede Hollow and the Hams Brewery, and watch the glow of the setting sun on the Red Brick Brewery. See firsthand the sunset, and after the sun sets, the food and socializing begins, and it's with former Swede Hollow residents and Hams employees, and everybody else is welcome. It's a beautiful event. There's a $10 suggested donation, but come no matter what. Thanks.
Great. I know there's a secret spot in the tunnel down there that if you stand in it and sing, it sounds really beautiful, too, so. Somebody there will likely be able to point that out. Any other news from the wards before we adjourn today? All right. Seeing none, we are adjourned.